Well, it's 7:00 PM and we have a quorum, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. We have a couple of people, one person online, another one who's coming online momentarily, I mean, a little bit late, and we also have two board members who will not be with us this evening, DNAC and Alicia, and I'm hoping that Brendan walks through the door at some point. But we have a quorum, so we can get started, and we'll start with pledge of allegiance. Good evening, everybody. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the March 5 budget workshop. Motion made by Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Paula. Any discussion? All those in favor of the March 5 budget workshop minutes, please indicate by raising your hand. Oh, Brendan's just walking in, he's voting too. Wonderful. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the March 12 regular board meeting. Paula's nodding her head, motion.
Second.
Seconded by Mark. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Approved. So, public comment, is there anybody who would like to speak during public comment? Either online or here in the auditorium? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move on to Board Chair's report. There are a couple of things I just want to mention, one is that we were planning on discussing the Ed specs for the elementary school consolidation this evening. We're going to be taking that up at our next meeting because there's some information that we're waiting on, so I don't want board members to think that we've forgotten about that, but that will be coming up at the April 9 meeting. We also are presenting our budget, the Board of Ed budget, to the Board of Finance next Wednesday, April 2 at 7:00 PM at Town Hall, and I encourage board members to show up, other folks from the district to show up. There is public comment, so if any members of the public want to talk about our budget, support our budget, that would be great. There will also be a public hearing at a later date in April, but we're putting together a different kind of presentation than we usually do to try to tell the story of Wyndham Public Schools and sort of provide more context for our budget request. So we'll be doing that on April 2, next Wednesday, at 7:00 PM at Town Hall. I would like, under discussion items tonight, to add an agenda topic for the Board to discuss possible dates for a couple of online Zoom forums that the Board of Ed could host to explain to the public our budget. I'd like to choose some dates tonight that work for the superintendent, Acting Superintendent and the rest of us, and so that we can publicize those dates. I think it would be great to go into the meeting on April 2 before the Board of Finance and publicly announce those dates and share those dates with families in our district and other folks like that, to give people an opportunity to learn more about our budget. And then, the final thing I have on my report is that I know the Town Council is working with, some members of the Town Council are working with our state Representative Susan Johnson on the possibility of a municipal resolution in support of the state legislature doing some things around our fiscal constraints that are keeping, you know, to update, given our current situation with dwindling resources potentially coming from the federal government for a whole slew of programs, not the least of which is potentially Medicaid and other things, but also, given the needs that the municipalities have and the Boards of Ed have, do we want to be encouraging our legislature this year to actively do something to free up some of our surplus money for investment in local needs? So I would like, at some point, for the Board to discuss that, maybe we could talk about that during discussion items today. So, sorry to spring a couple of new things on folks, but that's my report for now. Oh, and one more thing, we are moving forward on the superintendent search, and the Board of Ed will share updated information with the public and everybody else when we have something definite to say about where we are on our choice for superintendent, so stay tuned on that. That's it, I'm going to hand it over to the Acting Superintendent, Neil Weathers.
Thank you, good evening. Just, we had a comment from one of the Zoom members for the IT that they couldn't be heard when one of the board members spoke. Just, okay, I'm going to keep going though, right. So, good evening, everybody. The first item that I have for the Acting Superintendent's report tonight is just to update the Board on the lotteries. The lotteries took place and were revealed on this past Friday, March 21. Families were notified by emails after the lotteries were drawn, and now we're in the phase where parents and guardians of these students must accept their child seat by April 4, 2025, and if anyone wants to learn more information about our lotteries, you can go onto our website and there is a lotteries button that you can click on and learn more. So, just wanted to update the Board that that is taking place, and obviously, both of those programs, you know, are a substantial portion of our population. Next, I just want to talk about a really cool thing that has come back to Wyndham, and that is our unified basketball team. So Wyndham High School recently brought back its unified sports program, beginning with a basketball team. The unified basketball team pairs student athletes with and without disabilities on the same team. For all students involved, these programs offer increased social competence, improved self-esteem, enhanced teamwork skills, the opportunity to form meaningful relationships, and a sense of belonging. The team participated in the ECC tournament on March 4, and it was a great experience for our students, and Wyndham High School and the Athletics Department is working to expand our unified sports opportunities, and I just want to give a big thank you to all of our staff that made this happen, and just as a little personal note, when we did our pep rally for the girls before the state, the team actually did some shooting drills for everybody, and it was just a really, really nice moment, so I just wanted to share that with everybody.
That's a great photo.
Yeah, agreed. Thank you. So, the next thing is actually something that is currently occurring, it might actually still be going on, right, is our Arts Expo. So the elementary and secondary arts expos are happening right now and tomorrow at Wyndham Middle School. The art gallery opens up at 5 o'clock each night, and the musical portion is occurring at 6:00 PM. Like I said, elementary is occurring right now, and tomorrow will be the secondary art expo for grades 6 to 12. The performances I got to see before I headed over here were wonderful, and it's just really coordination, not only of each school, but they do some performances, the elementary of all the schools combined, which is just lovely, and again, our staff that makes it happen, we have a fantastic music department, and I'm really just appreciative of this. I think this is our third annual, so it's pretty exciting. And then, keeping the good news train going, tomorrow there is a ribbon cutting at North Wyndham Elementary School for our school-based health center. Obviously, if any of you are around, you are welcome to join us, that will be taking place at 5:00 PM. We'll have a few small welcome speeches and some light refreshments, as well as a tour of the two offices, and hopefully, if weather permits, a peek of the greenhouse. I think I mentioned this last time, but since it's tomorrow, I thought it was worth just quickly mentioning again.
Thank you, Neil. Are there any comments or questions on the Board, from the Board?
Wonderful activities.
Yep, great, and I know, Paula, you were able to go to one of the arts, part of the arts.
All the talent. It were just incredible. They had soloists. They had soloists singing, and every school had like its own identity in terms of how they performed and what exactly they did. Oh, but then the wee ones were so adorable. Oh my gosh, it was precious, they really did a great job.
No wonder you came in at the last minute, I can see why you couldn't tear yourself away. Anybody else? Okay, we'll go on to the committee reports. Mark, Finance and Audit.
Thank you. Just before that, Lynn, did you want to make a motion to add your item to the action items?
Sure, we can do that now, if you want. Okay, I would entertain a motion to add discussion of the Budget Forum dates under discussion items, and I'd also like to add a discussion of this resolution regarding the state budget to our agenda, if possible. Do I get a motion? So moved by Katina.
Second.
Seconded by Paula. Hilda, thank you for joining us. Do, does anybody have any discussion on those before we vote to add them to the agenda? Okay, all those in favor of adding those two items to the discussion agenda, please raise your hand. It's unanimous, thank you. So, thank you, Mark, now we're back to Finance and Audit.
Excuse me, to give you the brief report, we talked about money, talked about the fact we needed it and how much we weren't having. If you want more detail, okay.
We do want some more detail.
More detail. So, Rita reviewed the budget transfers, which the committee moved to approve, and budget, we have another page of transfers, Rita?
Yeah, so, for everyone, the budget transfers that were discussed at Finance and Audit are in the packet. Since then, we had additional budget transfers that, whenever you're ready, we could discuss why those are, but those were not discussed at Finance and Audit, and those were, that's why I didn't include them in the packet.
So, just to clarify, Rita, so the total transfers that we're doing tonight would be $159, $500 if we approved the additional?
No, the total is, the total for the additional is $330,941, it's on the second page. That's the additional transfers, all by, I just submitted them all by themselves so that you can look at, look them over. The ones that were brought to the Finance and Audit Committee, that totaled $322,623.
So, combined, we're looking for approval of $330,941?
No, it's like 600. They're two separate amounts.
Yeah.
Interesting.
We're looking for those two totaled together, correct?
Because the grand total on March 19 is the $322,623, and then the grand total for tonight is $330,941.
So mathematically, how does an additional $159 only total $330 compared to $322 before? I'm confused.
That $159 is just one transfer, Mark. It's transfer number 146.
Right. Yeah, so see where it says grand total for BOE?
The items are there, okay, thank you.
That one's just for Wyndham Middle School and Wyndham High School.
So if my math is correct, it would be $653,564 if we added the two together?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry for the confusion.
All right, I guess, any questions when we get there for approval? We also reviewed the year-to-date operational budget, we're still waiting for some final figures from the state for a magnet school grant, and the state will be sending us the special ed reimbursement money that they recently restored in April, though it's to note that that reimbursement money, that special ed grant, is not additional money. They essentially put back the money that they had taken away a couple months prior to that, so that money will be put back into compensating us for special, special ed grants such as the rise in transportation. Neil went over the 25, 26 budget presentations to the Board, there was discussion on how that'll be done. Lynn reported that the Board of Finance had voted the previous, that we will not have to pay part of our healthcare expenses to help us partially adjust for the $586,000 grant cut that the state did to our ECS money. We still need to come up with whatever the difference is there. And, let me see, I'm sorry. And then Rita presented a draft copy of the RFP for Consultant for Health Benefits, and we're waiting for the attorney to make final review before that was actually passed on, which I think is done tonight, do I see that on the agenda?
My understanding, Mark, is that we're waiting, still waiting to hear from our attorney, so we probably won't be able to take action tonight.
That's what I thought, I just need on the action agenda items, that's why I was curious.
Yeah, so I think we may want to, if we want to keep this moving along, we may need to have a special Zoom meeting or something as soon as we hear back from Jessica and we have a chance to post it properly, so maybe next week we could do that.
And just one more thing, during Neil's presentation, we went over part of the reasons why we are looking for the 5.8% increase in our budget, such as a $2 billion loss in our grant monies, there'll be no 2% set aside this year, and currently 45% of our staff are already funded through grants, and then we're always looking for ways of promoting or supporting our students, but those we'll go over in detail with our presentation. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Mark? Okay, so, we're on to discussion items, and when we get down to the budget transfers, we can amend a motion to, oh, well, there's no specific amount in the, on the agenda, so we can make the motion to do both if we want, or table one for now if we don't feel ready, but let's have discussion about that when we get down to the action items, does that make sense? Okay, good. So, first action, I mean, discussion, the budget forums, I wondered if folks have their calendars, if they could, okay, well, let's take a look at our calendars and try to come up with some dates. I asked Neil before tonight to look at his calendar, because it's really important that Neil is on hand and Rita is on hand. That doesn't mean that they're going to be doing the whole presentation by any means. I think the Board will need to participate in that, but, so if we're presenting on the 2nd of April, when do we think we might be able to schedule a couple of evening Zoom meetings? And I was thinking, maybe for working families, 7 o'clock, makes sense? What do folks think? Yeah, 7 o'clock, so they could get home kind of late? What do you think?
Lynn?
Yeah? Yes, Katina?
Are you saying before the 2nd of April, so from, on Zoom, around 7 o'clock? I just wanted to make sure I heard you correctly.
No, not until after the 2nd of April.
Okay, got you. And may I also?
And we'll have to think about Spanish language presentation that, or maybe do one in Spanish and one in English, I mean, open for discussion from folks.
We have a Facebook page, don't we, as a district? And my, one of my suggestions is that maybe doing FaceTiming will be more, have more effect than Zoom.
A Facebook?
Facebook Live.
Do it on Facebook, yeah, we can, I mean, I don't know what the
Just proposing.
Ability of the district to do that is, but it is a good way for some people to get on, we've done that before.
We could check in the feasibility of it, I haven't done it recently, I know we did it a long time ago, I, we just have to look into it.
Yeah, so the technology of how we do it, we could look into different options. Brendan, do you have any opinion on that?
You know, there's definitely a contingent that might be more comfortable doing a Facebook, but it's more of a one-way medium, there's not as many mechanisms for them to interact with us, it's mostly, mostly through comments, they can't do any audio or visual themselves, like that's only a presentation, so.
Sorry, see, I'm not an IT person, I didn't think about that.
Yeah, I mean, I would think that if we do a forum, we want to make sure that people can ask questions. Yeah, but it's much, if there's no way for, except on, if you do Facebook, if there's, if you can only type in and not be heard, that's, that's going to be prohibitive, I think, for folks.
Yeah.
So, Mark?
Just a question, Lynn, normally the Board of Finance has two meetings with us, the first meeting and then a second where they make the decision. So, I would think that these forums should be between those two times, do you know when the second meeting will be?
No, I don't know when the hearings will be, I do know that the town is presenting tonight, and we're presenting on the 2nd, so ostensibly, any one of the Wednesday nights in, in the month would be, would be one that the Board of Finance, but I would hope it's not on the 9th or the 23rd, because that's when we have a regular Board of Ed meetings, so maybe the 16th we could ask for, I could talk to Tyler about that.
I was just worried that we get our forums in before that second meeting, that's, that was my question.
What about having, what about having the forum on Monday, the 7th? We have several meetings that evening, so most of us will be on those meetings, we have policy, school planning, so easily at 7, we can jump to another Zoom meeting.
Easily. I think we should have two dates, so what do people think about the 7th? For one date, Mary?
Well, I don't really want to do three meetings in one night, but I mean, I don't have to go to all the other ones.
How about, what do people think, any objection to Monday, the 7th? Okay, well, we'll shoot for Monday, the 7th, at 7, it would have to be at 7.
School planning and design is at 6:30.
Oh, okay. So policy?
That's probably fine.
It's probably fine, or 7:15.
We're usually less than half an hour.
Is it too tight for you, staff? Be honest.
For me, the, after school planning and design, it's not, but it is a night of, like, so we have policy, then school planning and design, and then the forum.
Right.
That would be a pretty action-packed night. Although we're a very action-packed staff, you tell us.
Neil, do you know when the AdHoc High School, we're sort of not on a schedule, but is it the 15th instead of?
Actually, that might be, it's funny, because these are no longer on the calendar because of their irregularity, but actually, AdHoc, I would avoid the 7th, because AdHoc High School could be that evening as well.
Okay, so, okay. I can't hear what you're saying, Alvy. Mondays. So, how about Thursday, the 10th? For one, no?
Can I help you with all the dates that we don't have something on?
Yes.
Okay, because that would be helpful, right? Okay, so the dates, because we've just scheduled all of the Sweeney and North Wyndham parent forums about the transition to middle school.
Oh.
So I wanted to give you that information, right? So here are dates we have nothing on, Thursday, April 3, Friday, April 4, Friday, April 11, then we have break the next week, which actually, in terms of families, might not be a terrible thing to offer one, Monday, April 21, Tuesday, April 22, and Friday, April 25, and I can repeat those, if that helps, yep.
I just want to say that if staff are on break, I don't think we should have a meeting, just be, I mean, unless we say that none of you have to come and we're able to do it ourselves.
If it's for families, that's what you can consider, I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm around, we're around, and we can get a translator, yeah. And the other dates, we have things, but if you want me to answer, like, what times we have things, I can, I have the whole calendar ready for you.
Okay. Well, I think it's most important that we have Neil and Rita, so the question is, are you going to be around during that break week?
I don't think it's right to ask people to give up their break, actually, but, I mean, I'm just speaking.
Well, we do have a Board of Ed Finance Committee meeting on the 16th, and
We've never had meetings over breaks, so we must have scheduled that without knowing this.
Well, and the other thing I want to mention is that we may be going before the Board of Finance that night, so we couldn't do it that night.
I'm going to add that I'm going to be out of the state during all that week.
Okay, okay, well, that would be a problem, not having you there to help.
Third sounds like a great, why don't we book the 3rd at least, and then go from there?
I can't do the 3rd.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a, no, no, I have a commitment that night, I'm sorry, like a longstanding commitment, so. I'm back to, so the tenth, we can't do, you're saying?
The tenth and the, the eighth, the tenth and the twenty-fourth are the parent forums about the transitions between Wyndham Center and Grade Four, Five, and all of the changes.
Okay.
The, the thirty, oh no, sorry, we don't want to go before your presentation to the Board of Finance. Any others?
Well, I'm really stymied as to when we could do one before the Board of Finance presentation, Mark. What I was thinking, we want to do these before people vote. And they're not going to be voting till the beginning of May, so that does leave the last two weeks of April open.
My only, my only thought of that, Lynn, was that if the board makes a drastic cut, that we could use the parent support to get that cut, not finalized. That's why I thought we'd do at least one before that finalized cut.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Yeah, that does make sense. Well.
What's the eighth? Is that a bad one?
It's a parent thing that night, and we have the school consolidation. No, no, that's the first elementary school consolidation.
Yes.
Well.
We could always postpone, I mean, if we need to, then.
I don't want to really do it before we go, before the Board of Finance. Because that's really where we're going to test this presentation and adapt it for the parents. Yes.
Any possibility of the ninth before the board meeting?
I will tell you, there's a good reason why we can't do it that night. So. So, okay, let's jump to that week after break and figure out when we could do it that week. So the twenty-first or the twenty-second?
Sounds good to me.
Does that make sense to folks? Twenty-first or twenty-second?
Sure.
Let's do those, both, those two nights, um, you know, because some people can come on a Monday night, some people could come on a Tuesday night. Thank you for your help, Beth.
So at seven?
Yeah.
Zoom.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry that was so painful.
Busy people.
So I'm going to put this, so the twenty-first and twenty-second, and then, this resolution idea, I meant to bring it with me, and I didn't, but I can send it out to folks tomorrow. Legislators up at the Capitol are trying to get support from their municipal entities to build momentum, to open up some of the state's surplus money for use. And not get stymied by the budget cap, spending cap, or the fiscal guardrails that were put into place by the legislature. And so my question to the board is, I know some people in the town council are considering a resolution. The language has been drafted up that we could adapt for Board of Ed purposes. My question is, is it worth me spending some time on following up on that and then bringing it back to the board for action on April ninth? Any comments, Mary?
So, yeah.
Anybody else have an opinion on that?
I think it's worth pursuing.
How about you, Brendan?
It's at least worth looking at. I want to see the details, but yeah.
Yeah, okay. Uh, Mark, have you, fine? Katina?
Go ahead.
Elda, are you still around, or did we lose you? Okay, okay, well, it looks like I'll follow up and send something to you all before then. And then we can figure out whether we want to bring it up on April ninth. Because that certainly wouldn't be too late. I mean, the legislature, it looks like is probably going to have a special session this year to have to deal with the budget. So, okay. Action items. I would entertain a motion to vote on the field trip for CH Barrows to go to Old Sturbridge Village on June sixth, twenty-five.
So moved.
Motion made by Brendan?
Seconded.
Seconded by Katina. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay. Unanimous. Policies for repeal and replacement, um, we have one, two, three, four policies for repeal and replacement under item B. I would entertain a motion to approve those in the five thousand series.
So moved.
Can we, I was going to bundle them because they are all repealed and replaced, and they were legislative actions taken.
Okay, so you want us to take action on B, C, and D, all in one motion, Katina?
That would be my motion.
Okay. Um, do you want to second that, Brendan?
Second that.
Okay. So motion's been made and seconded to take up, um, B, C, and D, all of which are policies for repeal and replacement in the five thousand series, three thousand series, and four thousand series. Now we can have discussion. Katina, is there anything, or Mary, go ahead.
Oh, well, I, if, if Katina has something to say, I, I, I'm confused because I don't see the replacements. Many of these we did just approve of, like, some in October and some last August, so, um.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to say, as we describe and explain on the last, uh, board meeting, these are all legislative updates, and at that time, we received all the policies with the language that had been changed due to the legislative requirements. So that, that's why it is, uh, yes, totally. It's kind of annoying that we just approved them and now we have to update them. But the word that we're using them is replace them, but they were all legislative, uh, actions taken on twenty-twenty-four, therefore, we need to, um, comply.
Yeah, so, um, oh, I'm just going to add to Katina's point. Most, the, all of them basically are language changes, like where definitions have been altered due to legislative actions. The policy, the spirit of the policies aren't different at all, and during the policy meeting, we basically explained the differences between the two policies. And that's why you see recent dates, and at the bottom, right now, we have a question mark because we haven't technically adopted them yet until tonight. Like, so that's why, if, if that's out of turn, then it may be something on our part, but that, go ahead.
So these are the replacements. I mean, I'm just confused because I didn't see the repeal, what we're repealing, and I didn't see what we're, we're replacing it with.
Do I remember incorrectly that, um, that we posted them last week, uh, or in the last meeting, if they are language, and, um, and I thought we did that. Maybe, Brendan, can you remind me if that was correct? Maybe not.
We discussed it last meeting. I don't believe we had it in front of us, but I believe the ones, I'm just looking through the ones in front of us right now, are the revised ones.
Yeah, the only ones that we have here are revised. If we need to go back and show the originals and the revised for next time, we can do that. Okay.
And, and Beth, Beth was giving the thumbs up on that, so.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so any further discussion on the motion that's on the floor to approve these updates, really, basically, to the, to the, these policies to comply with state legislation? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion that's on the floor, please indicate by raising your hand. Elda, are you voting?
I think we lost her because I just texted her.
She's on the screen, but we don't see her, but, okay. So, everybody voted except Elda. And, um, budget transfers. So how do you all want to work, do this? Should we put a motion on the floor and then we can have discussion?
There she is.
Somebody want to put a motion on the floor?
I'll move we accept both sets of budget transfers totaling six hundred and fifty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Second.
Motion's been made by Brendan, seconded by Mark. Now it's time for a discussion. Maybe Rita could come up and explain the, the latest additions for today, because it's a hefty chunk of money, and, um.
So I'll jump in and then we can ask Rita questions. I just wanted to explain the, the add, the added policy, that, added policies, the added budget transfers, excuse me, because they weren't mentioned in Finance and Audit. So what we discovered, um, when we were going through process of our utilities, actually, Mark recently at a, one of the budget workshops is mentioning, do we anticipate any utility increases? It turned out like there was a rate hike in our electricity that occurred in the recent months. So we, this budget transfer is to project an increase for this year and to move our funds to pay for that. Would you say that is a correct summary, Rita?
Most of them are utilities, as you can see. I didn't want them to go out of order, so there is some other small ones on there. But the majority of them are, um, for utilities, and number one forty-six is over fifty thousand, so we cannot move forward with that one until it's approved by the board. So that's why I, you know, had it, um, I wanted them to be seen tonight.
So just to be clear, Neil, you're not blaming me for this increase, you're just crediting me with figuring it out?
That is a correct.
You were, you were like foresaw the future. And it included rate increases.
There, there is no blame for the increase, I promise.
Any further questions for Rita? Okay. Looks pretty clear. So, uh, all those in favor of the motion on the floor for six hundred and fifty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars in transfers, please indicate by raising your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. And as I reported on earlier, the RFP is not ready for action tonight, um, because we are waiting to hear back from our attorney. So I think the board members should expect that before April ninth, in order to keep this moving along and be able to do the transfer over in the health plan, we may be asking folks to jump on a quick Zoom meeting next week. And we'll, we'll try to arrange that at a time that works for as many of us as possible. Okay. So with that, we're on to public comment. Anybody want to speak during public comment? Nobody online, nobody in this room. Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn at seven forty-four.
I move, we move.
Meeting adjourned.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.